Everything he does. He is a fantastic friend and example of what a Benita Elementary student looks like. Jaxx knows what is expected of him and rises way above that standard. We're so lucky to have him at the E S. And then I have a couple of other teachers that he said previously. One of them said, Jaxx is a hard worker with a heart of gold. And the other one said, Jaxx, well, is a hard worker who's incredible and giving 100%. He always goes above and beyond. When asked to write a sentence response, he will write a detailed paragraph. He is kind and supportive to all of his customers. So congratulations.
I don't think this is fine. All right, so if everyone would write that. But to lead it to money, having a view to start tonight, okay?
I'm glad you're willing to give your life within the heart of the state of America. And to the Republic. For the nation under God and with the world with every hand just for all.
Congratulations. Thank you. Good job. And we don't have to say no.
Can you stand up for Dylan? Thank you. Congratulations.
All right, thank you. Most of the various big reviews and dairy queen after the.
We're going to.
All right, we will leave on the public comment. I don't believe we have any, but correct. And then monthly items approval of the September minutes. And questions about those or?
I move that we approve the September minutes. And.
Have a motion in a second to approve the September minutes as written. Any other discussion? All of the papers, the I. Jackie?
I have to abstain. I wasn't here last month.
Okay, you don't have to abstain, but because you can still approve minutes, but that's fine. What Gary please?
Okay.
Then we will move on to. The moment report. On is online.
I am. Can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Perfect.
Yes.
I'll wait for Michelle to pull it up. There it is. Okay, as of October 1st, our in district enrollment was 19 students higher than projected in our budget. Elementary is up 21 students. Myra Elementary's class size is averaging 23.08 students. And Benita is averaging 25.36 students per class size. Then middle school is up six students and the high school is down eight. So for a total of 19 difference from the budget. Our out of district placements are sitting at 22, which is six above what we budgeted. Was 15. And the charter school is down two from the projected budget. I did look at last year's. I was just curious where we were sitting last year at this time. And last year we were down 63 students. From last year from the budgeted numbers and we're up 34 from where we were at last year.
Great. Any questions from the board?
The other district placements are those our kids going out of our school district.
Yeah, so those would be students attending like Bridgeway. Life skills classes, Lane School.
All right, you want to go on to the. Ready to explain the report?
Yeah. Okay, and this is as of September 30th. We've received 25% of our budgeted revenue. Last year we were at 23% at this time. We did receive a fairly large state timber payment in September for 298,000. Luckily, we received it early in the year, so I can report that to O D E. And they'll adjust our payments prior to year end, so we won't have an adjustment for that next year. We've spent 12% of our budgeted expenditures. That is exactly where we were at last year at this time. And our first large payroll occurred in September and those numbers came in as expected. And that is about all I have unless the board has any questions on that.
All right, and we need a motion to approve financial report.
I'll make a motion to approve the financial report as given by Quana.
I'll second.
Have a motion in a second. Any other discussion? And then all of the papers, the I.
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 Vote Gary's board to zero. All right.
Yes. Am I related? I think we have the budget meeting calendar.
I'm sorry. All right, so per dreaming of the budget meeting calendar.
So Quana, the only question I have is if you confirm that none of these dates are. Have other award ceremony, end of the year award ceremonies on the same date?
When this came out, I looked and the high school hasn't booked there. So once this is approved, I'll send it to Ray and save away these.
Yeah, I'm sorry. Yeah, just what Gary said, that was it.
Okay.
All right, so it's per dream, then we'll look at it again next month. And now down to reports, Mr. Jerry.
What are we on? Division 22? What says? Yes, all right. So a couple of things on vision 22. This is a reminder. Well, now we are two or three of us doing this in October. Used to be a lot later in the year and we we filed a report on how we were in compliance with the standards. The previous year, so 21 or 22 school year. This web, this, this page on OD's website gives you anything you want to know about division 22. The reason I pull it up is because if you scroll down. It has a link that says what? Exemplar district reports from last year sent in and look who's at the top.
Right, I'll try to go through that.
We don't go ahead. We are at the top because ours was such an exemplar. Okay, so back away from there, back to our district homepage. So we post these under district and state reports. It's on the left hand side there. So we post a lot of things, so click on that and then right here in the little page. They have, there's probably 30 reports on here, but there's our division 22 report for this year. I think there's 59 different areas. Some of them, you know, I answer myself, some of them I send to, for example, Ms. Marshall. Even a building principal, for example, the E L L or E O B plan. Anyway, so over the course of probably the last six, eight weeks, I've been working on this updating our, for example, our wellness plan, which is still in the works, our drug and alcohol plan. Our addies law, a long list of things and we're. In compliance with all of them except for one. So I'm going to take a few down here. I think it's on page seven. When you're not in compliance, this is the first time I reported this not being in compliance with something. You have to come up with a plan to be in compliance. So I've been talking to the lady at OD that specializes in division 22. The area the route compliance in and looking into it is our asbestos management plan. And there's the O A R, which describes, you got to have so many people trained. In where your asbestos is in your district and asbestos safety, et cetera. One of the requirements is that you have a plan that's updated every three years. And when our facilities manager left, we started looking for the last plan and the last one we could find was greater than three years ago. So we have contracted with PBS Engineering. We actually in the last week got a, got a sign off in the builder in a Myra Elementary that says. It's a new building. It was built without any asbestos, so we don't have to inspect that one. So we're going to be able to eliminate that from our future reports. We are in the process of signing a P O with them in the amount of $6,800. And they're going to give us a fresh new, they're going to come to all our buildings over winter break, right? This is the plan. Look at the documents that we have to show us where are the locations that we have asbestos, you know, identified. Double check that we have the proper people trained. Help us get a clean, brand new three year plan. Hope us to submit it by middle of January and we'll begin to build. But currently. We're reporting us out of compliance in that area, hope to be in compliance by January. I ran, I invented this language with the lady OD. She said, that all looks great, so hopefully we're going to go down. And that's all I have on division 22.
Any questions? All right, next. Do the restaurant account and your report.
Okay, so this is your annual report for 2122, which is something that we have to present to the school board and post prior to school board or public comment. It's pretty short and sweet this year, and this is probably the last year we'll have it targeted to S I A because of integrated guidance. But here we go. So S I A, you can, it's mainly for meeting students' mental and behavioral health and then increasing academic disparities. So you can look at class size, well rounded education, instructional time, health and safety. Hopefully everybody's somewhat familiar with this since we've seen it for a couple of years. Here's our, what we budgeted for last year, 2122. So that first column is staffing continued. So we, we've had S I A for a few years now, so some of these folks we had the first year that we got funding. And so we've continued with them or added them last year. So quite a few staff members, district members, options by a elementary P E teacher, family support coordinator. We're funding half of our C T E, Mr. Johnson and half of one of our counselors at the high school. Everybody else there is full time. My K 12 director is like point two maybe was part of it. Then we have budgeted activities, so all of the activities we have to report on and where we're at in. Are we like green or fully in place and they're happening? Are they yellow that they're starting to be in place or are they red? We budgeted for them, but nothing can happen. So over the course of the year, you know, those colors change, but by the end we were pretty much all green and ready to go. We did reallocate some dollars just because it's hard to, and I'll talk about that in one of the questions. It's hard to really narrow it down to the exact dollar that you're going to spend on a specific activity. Like we budgeted $10,000 for the K 12 harm support, but only spent 6,700, something like that. So then you have to look at tier two items and difference of planting that you can do. Speaking of that, so. The process for recording is you have a quarterly report that you go through and you update your budget, your activities. You kind of look at what progress you're making and you answer some journaling questions. Those I don't need to report to the board, but I, I feel like we've shared them before or at least different pieces of it. And then you have your annual budget, which is completed, you make adjustments, amendments, and then you submit it to O D E for approval. So that's all happened for this year. Then at the end of the year, you do your annual questions and this is by far the easiest way. We could, I could do like an hour long presentation if you wanted, but. What I'm presenting are the, just the journal questions that we have to answer and then we have to do a little bit more. But this is the most important part. There are some optional pieces that I did not do. So this is the required. Go back to question one, please. Thank you. Or not. So the first question just talks about what changes, behaviors, policies, actions are, have happened. What have we done specific to 2122 school year and because of S I A? And how are they contributing to our outcomes and goals? And so the biggest thing for, for me, speaking on behalf of the district, is the focused and intentional planning. And that everything we're doing around S I A is around certain activities and certain goals, so it's really targeted. We get to really use our data over and over for the same activities. We're seeing how much progress we've made, whether it's budget or participation. And then I think that the other big thing that we've seen is just how we're using community input to review our planning. If we're doing what we're saying and it's feeling like people are noticing. So that would be that one. The second question talks about what barriers or challenges? And I feel like we've said the same answer for the last two years. I mean, COVID has made everything really, really hard. And then what adjustments did we make? So one of the hardest things has and continues to be staffing and not just trying to fill the jobs. Because for the most part, we're not full in most of our position, but we have so many new folks that are brand spanking new. And they really need a lot of support, but they're also super overwhelmed by the work that we're doing. So trying to find that balance has been really tricky. The other thing that was a little bit frustrating last year was some of our timelines. Because we had allocation of dollars to some one time funds, whether it was shelving or. Signing supplies or banned equipment and just the turnaround time for making that happen. Was hard on our business office. It was hard on the staff. So this year we're doing all of that way earlier and so we're kind of learning from that. And then the last thing I would say is just the in-person engagement. Trying to make sure that you're getting valid, reliable and authentic feedback from the folks that you want to hear from has been hard. So we're going to continue to work on that. The third question is more focused on targeted engagement and local communities. And our groups that have more access issues to being successful in school. So building those relationships and how to maintain them. And I think the biggest thing is that I highlighted just that first one is that we're just continuing to try to engage with more people in different ways. Whether that's parent square, whether that's school age platform, so that parents feel like they have access to what they, how their kids are doing in easy to use ways. I think we're also doing a lot of engagement. We haven't done it yet this year and probably not as much during last year, but some is the K 12 discussion of needs. You know, it's really, really easy for our elementary folks to say, this is what we need and these are the most important things. And then our middle school people and our high school people, but to get them kind of on the same page and to see the input from each other is good. And then I did a student input survey and I was on a call with a gal from O D E today, like the equity director. And I was sharing the student input data that I got and it's just super valuable and the kids say they're so honest. So I think continuing to do stuff like that, but then making sure we have targeted ways to implement what they're saying. Okay, last question is. Did you think about what kind of your choice prioritization, what stands out? So one of the things that has continued to stand out for me, and I think the folks that are doing this work is the use of the equity lens and our decision making tools. So I would say maybe five, six years ago, when I was making decisions, I definitely. Just was trying to think really whole picture. And now the focus that we're doing for our kids that need the most support is really starting to like help us think about things differently. You know, when we were talking about your kid with the bus citation, like this kid needs to be in school. How do we make this happen? So how do we make sure that our kids that need the most help, we're making decisions that support them and our staff is supporting them? So and then I guess the other, the big thing that, learning about the impacts and future efforts is that we're really trying to find the balance between. Super quick wins, because everybody loves that, like that feels good. Oh, we got to regravel the middle school track and then systemic changes. And how do we like plan for that over the next few years? This one, but I think moving forward, so we've submitted our quarter one plan for 2223. We've submitted our budget for 2223. All of that's been approved. I think we just got approvals today from O D E. And it just incorporates our ongoing activities and additional like one time fun things that we're working on. The big push will be to continue to engage with stakeholders because O D E is moving to the integrated plan, which we've talked about a little bit. It rolls into combining six different O D E initiatives and we get to have that application on March. So this should be the last S I A annual report, but then we'll move into the integrated guidance and planning. Any questions?
Sounds good. Great work. No questions, then thank you very much for that.
Just a couple of quick things to go over, wrap the coming week in general, home sports, home to all sports are pretty close wrapped up. There's no, two more football games are both away, two more volleyball games are both away. So we have, you know, five weeks-ish now, no athletics until the end of November or when our sports will start. Open houses have occurred over the last few weeks. In particular, at the elementary, middle school level, they were very well attended, large crowds. So those all went well. We got our title four budget allotment approved just today. So a couple of things we'll be doing with that, those dollars. Number one, hiring artists and residents around ukuleles at both elementary schools, purchasing some ukuleles. And in particular, not. All, all the schools to some level, there's. Odd windows, odd shaped windows, small windows, maybe windows and doors that are going outside or smaller windows next to the door. Into the classroom or sometimes even a window in the door that don't have covering. Right, so the bigger windows outside, most of them have blinds, but every window doesn't have a blind. So we're spending some money on, you know, some teachers, this is like a safety thing, so during lockdowns, that kind of situation. Some of the teachers have made do by, by like short tension rods, like a. Shower curtain, kind of media thing and just hanging curtains in there. Anyway, we've allocated some money. One of the areas that, two primary areas, title four can be spent on is well rounded education. That's where we've allocated the ukulele money, second one is school safety. We've allocated some money here, so over the next several months, building principals will have access to these dollars. If they have windows in any of their rooms and any of their buildings and they want to purchase coverings where they can access this. And then if we're not having enough fun with all of our audits, just got informed on Friday that they're going to come. OD is coming down on the audit transportation department, all things buses. So over the next few months, today we pulled out a survey and sent off to them. They asked us questions or questionnaire. Over the next few months, we'll be getting to do that.
Are other districts gaining the number of audits?
We've been on a rush here the last 18 months, so hopefully we're good for a few years now. Yeah, I don't recall so many in a short period of time, that's for sure. Yeah. Yeah, they, they wanted to knock us down because they said we were exemplar. Let's go on them on everything. Yeah, in general, it's just, I guess our time's up. It shouldn't be a big deal, but just wanted to let you know that that'll be going on over the next several months. And that's all you have?
Okay, we'll move on to discussing items. First up is proposed high school trip to Germany, Amsterdam, Wayne. Preparation or something to say about that?
Yes. So for the last year or so, there's a group of students that have expressed interest in going to Germany. And specifically me taking them. And so we're looking into that as a possibility. We have looked into a couple of different options. One option is going with a packaged tour. And the company that the school has used before and we looked into, pretty expensive, excessive $5,000 for the summer timeframe. And so we're looking to do something on our own. And so I put together just a very brief information sheet about that. Wanted to give them a number, price tag to shoot for. So that hopefully they can start raising some money for that. So we're looking, spring break. Four students would be the ones that would be looking at doing this, German four students. And. So yeah, the information is up there, just very basic. One of the advantages of doing something ourselves instead of going with the package tour is it gives us some flexibility. We would get to go to the places that the students would like to go to and do the things that they would like to do. Some of the disadvantages, it's a cheaper trip. It's not going to be staying in five star hotels and eating in the fanciest restaurants. But again, even there with the eating, then that is. Depends on what the students themselves would choose to do. If they wanted to spend a lot of money on foods, then that would be their choice. That would be something that would be separate from the, the initial cost. So anyway.
Have you guys driven before?
I have, I have done similar trips before. I've organized and led probably a dozen trips, about five of those have been, have been with high school age students.
To Germany?
One of those was to Germany. I've actually spent the majority of my career as a Spanish teacher. So a lot of the trips have been to the Spanish speaking world, but one has been to Germany. Are you going to help coordinate fundraising for that? I will help coordinate. I will not promise that I will be at every fundraising activity and I let them know that. And so one of the things I, you know, it's a little, well, a couple of things I want to make the board aware of. So I've talked to Mr. Wagner about this and I support this. And asked this Mr. Gardner, who I've talked to about it. You know, typically when we were in a cycle of doing these for 15 or 20 years, you know, east coast trip one year, west coast trip the next year. The district planned for it and budgeted for it. The only real cost to the district here is the sub days, which there's three. Mr. Wayne, there's any be willing to use as personal days. I think what I will probably end up doing is kind of splitting those with him. So we have three days of the district's going to fly the day and a half of the sub. You know, he's obviously providing great opportunity to these kids. You can use a day and a half of his leave. And then the other thing is, you know, remember we really separated from, for example, the middle school is working on a trip right now. But that's not district sponsored at all. And if Mr. Wagner wanted to go this other route, you know, pay $5,000, that would be do your own thing, but in a facility use, we're not behind this at all. We just support our teachers ability to, you know, promote to the kids if they want to do it. In this scenario, as he describes, yes, way cheaper for kids and families. It's also, you know, in the first version, the more expensive version, Mr. Wagner, you're going to go along Mr. Chaffron and just, he rides around, you know, everybody else. Well, in this scenario, he's now got a lot of work and much more responsibility. So just like we kind of did with Mr. Bellingham, you know, the totality of the dollars raised is helping to fund him going on this trip. So. Him going on this trip, so I've talked to Mr. Wagner about it and just making sure that the students and families are aware of that upfront. It's a little bit, you know, when you're taking seventy kids to DC. It's not, you know, it's every kid paying fifteen dollars, this would be a little bit, you know, so definitely a little more for the four kids going, but I think that's a.
How many kids?
Four, 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 that's here in four kids, yeah.
Four that could go, that number may change.
Yeah. Uh you know, once I guess the board includes John or Mr. Wagner really start to do this and start to get, you know, this may not fly. Or could there be potential for more kids to go?
I don't see a way for more kids, so um but I would say that if if one of them dropped out, that would not substantially affect. The trip uh cost-wise or otherwise, I think we could still do it. Um if two dropped out, then that would make a major change.
Okay.
Um so probably would not do it with just two students, with one student, we'd definitely not do it, with two, possible.
Okay. Um so anyways, that's that's the conversations that we had, like I said, I'm in support of it, it's one of. Uh and Mr. Wagner is sure, will share with everybody how this is shaking out, that all the money will be run through student body count. Um at the high school, and we'll be off and running. We got kids interested.
Any other questions?
This is something the board needs to vote on and approve, as it's moving in the state.
Alright, then I would entertain a motion to approve the proposed EHS student trip to Germany as presented.
So I moved that we approve this trip uh to Germany, student trip to Germany as is said. I second that.
Alright, we have a motion in the second, any other discussion? You know, all of the papers, say aye, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Alright, motion carries four to zero, thank you.
Thank you for giving our due C of the day.
Yeah, definitely. Welcome, my pleasure.
Alright, thank you for allowing me to be here in person. Alright, um the next thing is the uh option recruitment adoption.
Yes, so. As you recall, this has happened a few times, with Mr. Cooper in the options program. Um it's happening again, we're wanting to add another course. Uh the logistics of the courses specifically, he just, this poetry. Uh and we're, he chose that course because it aligns with poetry currently being offered at the high school. Uh he submitted all of his paperwork, I don't know what exactly you have seen, but I've looked through it all, it's all in. Um it all looks good. Uh it's through, let's see, Imagine Learning Ingenuity. Um and they've taken what they have provided in that course, the Ingenuity Poetry Course. Worked with our current high school poetry teacher, aligned it to make them uh as similar as possible. And he's looking for approval now to offer poetry through Ingenuity. Wasn't in his long list that he submitted a year ago or whatever we did this. Right?
So we do prepare a board action for that.
I move that we approve the adoptions of the poetry course in the options program.
Yeah, a motion in second, any other discussion? You know, all of the papers, say aye, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries four to zero. And so just first reading for a couple of um policy updates?
Yeah, I'd say, these were, I've not heard about these, we have a bunch of policies coming, right? You know, a big stack, but I pulled these out ahead, they were, Michelle gave me these first because. She knew these were kind of new things, and I forwarded you the email, I emailed Mr. Lewis, what was this a result of? And I forwarded you that email um uh regarding his response, so.
And notice on the, I'm saying text agenda, they had a ton of policy.
Oh yeah, a lot are coming, yeah.
Alright.
So I suspect one of the reasons that the previous uh. Policy is being presented is because there has been some confusion about. What the board can direct the superintendent to do. And um I now laid out exactly, you can't break any state federal.
Or.
That is a conflict that has happened to the pattern, yeah.
Few years, yeah. Alright, so that's first thing, let's move to the next one. And next is the transit dollars.
Yep, so we do this every year, um we, the form shares that we need to identify that we're. You know, every district in Lang County, um all sixteen, there's seventeen with ESD. Um fill one of these out, and everyone in Lang County is in the not sixty, fifty percent. Uh for some reason, for example, there have been times, um ten years ago or so, where a district like four J was considering just pulling all their money out. Uh you know, if they pulled all their money out, well. You know, they make up sixty percent of all money in Lang County, really change things, but um we uh. We use a fifty percent of our funds, um just like everybody else's districts, so that we'll be submitting so the board agrees.
Okay, that require board.
Yeah.
Make motion.
I move that we approve the uh. Ongoing not to exceed fifty percent of uh.
Transit dollars.
Transit dollars. I already went on.
Great.
How else can I do?
Could have a motion in the second uh to approve the transit dollar reform, any other discussion? You know, all of the papers, say aye, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries four to zero. Moving on. We have, look like just one hiring for counselor at the middle school. That we need to approve, correct?
Yes.
Okay. May you approve that hiring?
Next. Please. Case key. Okay. I move that we approve the hiring of case mark to the counter one year. Um FTE counselor at the French High School until October tenth, twenty-twenty-two. I second that.
Motion in second, any other discussion? You know, all of the papers, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries four to zero. Has been put like, we know we have a few non-licensed ones we don't approve, but. Heard a few, a couple of eliminations. Yeah, that's just all, alright. And then we do have one late item, which was.
Again, a definitely item that didn't make it to each of the, um we're going to ask the board, so the budget committee, we're coming here. Position number two expired in the summer, June thirtieth, so we just need official board action, so we're leaving. About the same position, either they come back, it can apply, or someone new can apply to take that position too. But this will give us some time to fill it before budget comes rest. Uh position two, devote.
So you do a motion for that?
Yes, please.
To, to.
Uh to declare a vacant.
To declare vacant, okay.
I move that we declare a vacant position number two for the budget committee.
One second.
Good motion in seconds, any other discussion? You know, all of the papers, say aye, aye?
Aye. Aye.
Motion carries four to zero. So just one other thing that's that require a motion or anything, but we, uh Gary did put out about the preneed for. Uh we've done the past, prior to uh. Well, we haven't done it ever since COVID, and so um and it's really up to the board if you want to commit to coming in. It's most likely to be at six o'clock, though around six-thirty, after, usually the uh question answer only takes about a half hour, or at least seven to nine. Uh sometimes a little less, and so um. It's kind of the board, if you want to continue that, we can do that, uh where, just I'll make a rotation for the board members. And if you're available, great, if not, then we just won't do it at nine, so it's up to the board, if you'd like to come in, usually. He just goes over what's been happening in the meeting, a few other things that. Might be going on in the district, so. If you'd like to continue that, I'll make a schedule, and if not, then we won't do it, doesn't matter to me. I liked it when I wasn't the board chair.
Right.
And so, either way, for me.
I, I. I just would need to remember to put it on, that will get up.
Yeah, I know, that was a perfect problem, but I knew that it's how people send reminders or something about, but on my calendar, send reminders to people or nothing. They 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 do, if if people are gonna be available, um you know, most of the time, and it's only. With the board members, it's only, you know, every time here.
Right, yeah.
So we can, we can do it, and then if you can't make it, that's fine. Unless someone's really opposed to doing it.
I'm prepared.
Yeah, if you can't make it to that, we can, yeah. Alright, I'll put up with that, I'll make a schedule, email to everybody this week, love everyone. Alright, any other late items or closing comments? You know, thank you for being here.